Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the City of Delray Beach's Budget Workshop Meeting scheduled for 2:00 PM on June 13th, 2023. Please call the roll.
Mr. Frankel?
Present.
Mr. Long?
Present.
Ms. Burns?
Here.
Mayor Petrowia?
Here.
All right, we've got one workshop item. Mr. Moore?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and I just received word from Deputy or Vice Mayor Boleson that he is actually walking inside. So we can give him a second, or shall I go ahead and proceed with the introductory remarks?
Yeah, proceed.
Thank you. So in any event, the purpose of this exercise is a preliminary overview of what is anticipated relative to the fiscal year 2023, 2024 proposed budget. It's a preliminary exercise to give us the City Commission an opportunity to understand the city's current financial condition, a review of revenue and expenditure forecasts, as well as updates regarding the American Rescue Plan Act as it pertains to the fact that this is the final year of utilization of that particular process. There's been a lot of interest and dialogue expressed relative to the Urban Development Action Grant Program, UDAG, of which we will be offering commentary to that effect and the budget process and next steps overall. In essence, ladies and gentlemen, myself along with the Department of Finance has been working with department directors over the last six weeks or so to engage in budget review exercises in that. And while the Office of the City Manager is prepared to recommend a formal budget consideration, this is an opportunity also for the City Commission to offer any additional thoughts relative to ancillary goals, objectives, priorities, and focus you may wish to offer. A specific purpose of this exercise does likewise include a sense of what our capabilities are financially, as we will also discuss a bit relative to millage rate considerations and opportunities to move forward in that regard. Finally, given the interests and opportunities expressed during the May 12, 2023 Annual Goal Setting Session, some ideas and thoughts have been communicated at that time that can be used to segue into this engagement this evening. Likewise, ladies and gentlemen, I think we are all set, and we do have a formal presentation being made available by leadership of the Department of Finance, Hugh Dunkley. Much of what I just talked about, there will be some specifics offered to that effect, and I've asked all department directors to likewise be here as well to chime in relative to any specific direction and guidance that may be required on behalf of their respective fields and disciplines. With that, a formal presentation by Mr. Dunkley. The material is comprehensive in scope, however, it will be efficient because, again, this is you all's time, an opportunity to offer additional direction and feedback so that we can finalize recommendations for the July 11 City Commission Engagement, which is the timeframe for a formal recommendation from the Office of the City Manager. Mr. Dunkley, if you would, please, sir.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Commission. Basically, this afternoon, I'll be going over our current financial condition. I'll also go over some revenues and expenditure forecasts, which will serve as the backdrop for the most far-far development of a recommended budget for the upcoming fiscal year. We'll further discuss. See if it would help if I bring up the agenda. So basically, we'll further discuss the American Rescue Plan Act, as the manager mentioned, which has provided over $10 million in funding for the provision of essential government services over the past three years. Then we'll discuss the budget development, the budget cycle, and the next steps to come. So, play musical church with this. Bear with me. So basically, heading into the new fiscal year, that is fiscal 2024, we can say that our fund balance is fairly healthy at $45.5 million. The estimated taxable value for this year increased by approximately 1.8. It's going from $14.1 billion to $16.29 billion. That's an increase of roughly 13%. I'll kind of chronicle that increase later on in my presentation. The property tax rate is expected to decrease. That will be the 11th straight decrease over the previous fiscal years. The 432 parking plan that was previously approved is projected to generate over $2 million in additional revenue. The IAFF collective bargaining session is currently ongoing. The upcoming year's budget will have to provide for a required grant match for some of the recent grants which have been awarded to the city. Staff will only be providing for seven months' worth of funding for the Highland Beach contract, which has been a source of considerable discussion over the previous few months. We have currently in place an agreement with the Downtown Development Authority for programming of the Old School Square. We have the recently approved general obligation bonds for construction of needed public facilities. We also have an impending improvement revenue bond, which will be incorporated into our capital improvement programming, which will be presented to you as well during the July 11 meeting. And finally, we'll be discussing usage of the remaining UDAG funds. So whenever we think of the financial health of the city, we typically are referring to its general fund unassigned balance. And this has been somewhat of a conundrum for a lot of individuals, because whenever we speak of our unassigned fund balance, and we also give our quarterly update of our cash and investment position, a lot of viewers or members of the audience typically think they're one of the same, which they're not. The general fund balance typically is when we take all of the assets of the city and we subtract our debts. We have a lot of bonds, notes, leases. We have vendor payments and invoices outstanding. So essentially, the unassigned fund balance is the unencumbered funds that the city has to put towards any objectives that you might have for future spending. The General, the Government Finance Officers Association typically recommend that we maintain two months' worth of operating budget, which is, it equates the 16 point, 16.16% or 16 and 67%, rather, but a lot of governments typically just say, well, we're going to save 15%. However, if you're prone to natural disasters, which we are, flooding, earthquakes, hurricanes, it's assumed or it's recommended that you have a higher, a much higher percentage. In our case, we're assuming that percentage to be 25% because that puts us in a very strong position financially to be able to withstand all of these types of natural disasters. So from a numerical standpoint, we expect that will be about $10 million in excess of the target fund balance. And this is a blessing and a curse, because we do have some obligations upcoming in the form of grant matches. However, it's at your discretion that you can use these additional funds to fund budgetary priorities. As I was mentioning earlier about the taxable value of property, the taxable value of property has increased not only by 13.16% for the current year, but if you could see that it has increased considerably since the 2014 fiscal year. I'm taking about a 10 to 11-year trend here, but it's a considerable uptick in the taxable value of properties. So too are the add-on revenues derived from those, from the taxable value of the property. We're currently estimating around $101 million, which includes the CRA's share of tax revenues. In terms of, this is just another chart depicting the total taxable value of properties along with its corresponding tax revenues. As reflected there, we expect a 13.16% increase, and the $16.3 billion, that's going to be officially certified on July 1st. And that's where the property appraiser said, this is etched in stone. You could use this to, for budgetary planning purposes, and we'll incorporate that final certified taxable value with our official recommended budget that will be brought before you. So the millage rate, it's a perfectly downward slope. Over the past fiscal year, as I had mentioned, this only gives, not the 11 total years, but I could state that it's been the 11th straight year that the millage has been reduced. And so basically, we feel that that's some relief to the taxpayers, thanks to the strong growth in taxable values.
I think, I think that it was reduced or stayed level, because during the COVID years, we did not reduce it, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct?
During COVID?
I mean, it might have maybe because of, it might have looked that way because of debt ratio or the debt part of it, but for the most part, we did not change the.
Shows that in 21, 22.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, you're correct.
She's correct.
All right, got it.
Yeah, the debt ratio was the factor.
Right. You got it. All right, thanks.
And so what we're recommending in the upcoming year, we have a tentative recommendation, not necessarily officially before you. That will be brought officially before you in the form of a motion, but we do expect to recommend both decreases in operating millage as well as debt millage, which coupled together will give us a total millage rate of 6.5988988. The chart depicts, that's before you, depicts the overall expenditure growth for all city funds. And so in our July 11, we're going to be diving in headfirst to go, to articulate to you, as well as within the recommended budget document, will indicate what has been the major drivers of some of the changes to some of these major categories. However, I will just kind of go over a few. For the sake of our discussion here, I've excluded outliers as well as expenditures which are largely outside of the department's control, such as debt service, operating transfers. We have also excluded capital outlay, which we'll be going over more in depth at our, in our July meeting. So the increases in grants and aid is primarily due to the tax incremental share of revenues that will be paid to the CRA. That's around $2.9 million. The operating expense line, the general fund accounts for around $4 million of the $6 million increase here. A significant portion of that, approximately 1.5 million, represents vehicle rental charges to the fleet fund. We're expecting increases in the cost of utility services, electricity, water and sewer. We're looking at garbage, solid waste. We have increased those particular utility services to our residents and customers. However, we ourselves are customers, so the same line of thought that if the cost will increase for our residents and the customers of these utilities will be affected as well. We have projection in health insurance claims, insurance package policy premiums, workers' compensation claims, just to name a few. We also have increases in the cost of chemicals to operate the water treatment plant. So in a nutshell, we do see some increases there, but the departments, we feel, have done their very best to curtail increases in the cost for these various line items. But to focus more so on personnel services, the salaries and benefits line, we see an increase there. And in a nutshell, the benefits represent pension costs, FICA, health insurance, and things of that nature. And if you look at just the two public safety pension plan alone, those are roughly, I think, $8 million apiece. So you look at FICA and pension for the general employees, those are what make up the benefits. And the salaries and wages, we do project that post-pandemic, we have seen some increases in several line items that will be increasing that line as well. The American Rescue Plan Act, we have received over the previous years about $11 million in funding from the Treasury Department, and we have utilized, the $10 million that you see there have been utilized or will be after the end of the upcoming fiscal year for what the Treasury Department considers as essential government services. They say you can utilize up to $10 million for essential government services. You can also utilize it for other purposes. We have elected to utilize the $10 million for essential government services. The remainder of our allotment of almost $11 million can be used for these particular categories. So we could use it to, the lost public sector revenue has been accounted for. However, we can use it to invest in, from the bottom up, which is kind of the more prevalent uses that we see other communities, investing water, sewer, broadband, and infrastructure to provide premium pay for essential workers and to respond to the far-reaching public health and negative economic impacts. And the second one is a little bit somewhat of a tongue twister, because that's very all-encompassing. However, it's up to you as a commission to kind of, we can give suggestions, however, the ultimate decision is up to you as to how to allocate the remaining $956,000. As I've kind of stated, we're, the clock is ticking because we have to obligate the remaining funds by, I think, December 31, 2024, and it has to be expended fully by 2026, the end of '26. So the enterprise funds, and the enterprise funds, basically, they operate like regular business enterprises, hence the term enterprise. And the financial goal for enterprise funds is basically to cover the costs of providing those services. So as we have done in terms of sanitation, water, and sewer, the overarching goal is we're hoping to break even and not necessarily to charge or to overburden the customer. With that said, in the Water and Sewer Fund, you approved, I think it was in last year, a rate increase or a rate adjustment that became effective July 1st. The second adjustment of that rate will be effective on October 1st. Similarly, you recently approved Stormwater Assessment Rate Ordinance that will become effective in the new fiscal year, and that is, was very much so needed because of the necessary funding of capital programs and grant matches. The sanitation fund, that was approved via the not-exclusive franchise agreement with, the exclusive franchise agreement, rather, with the, with Waste Management. The municipal golf courses, the Lakeview Golf Course is, the only notion there is that they've been, basically are close to breaking even over the years. And however, we have significant and overdue repairs and renovations for those particular funds. And the City Marina and Cemetery, we do have the construction of a basilium there that's planned. So the rate increase, it will be a 6.11% increase in the Water and Sewer Fund. The other increases were somewhat chronicled in previous meetings. So where does this put us? So the next steps in our budget process, July 1st, as I mentioned earlier, will be receiving the formal certified taxable value from the property appraiser. From there, we'll kind of finalize a recommended budget document, which will be presented to you on July 11th in a, not a formal, more in-depth workshop. Late July, the state is perennially late with its revenue estimates. We receive a sizable amount of revenue from the state in the form of absent sales tax, revenue sharing. We receive local option gas taxes, communication services tax, and those amounts will be, we receive those estimates from the state. And we'll, in our July 11 budget recommendation, we're going to kind of extrapolate what we think we're going to receive there based upon our previous history. In August, we'll provide for additional budget workshops if necessary, and in September, we'll have two formal public hearings where the public will be, they have to be allowed to speak, to voice their opinion about the budget as well as the tentative millage. And then October 1st, fiscal year begins. And hopefully, I know that was mouthful, but I'm open for any questions that you might have pertaining to the president.
Yes, sir.
So before we proceed with follow-up questions, as I stated during the introductory comments, this is really the Commission's opportunity to not only receive an orientation, as noted, particularly for the newly elected officials joining the City of Delray Beach, and I hope you all appreciate the sense of direction in which we are. I did try to spend time with each of you individually to give you a sense of how this all works and what's in store. Nevertheless, shortly, you'll have an opportunity to proceed as I discussed during the introductory comments. Prior to questions, however, I would like to ask the Director of Neighborhood and Community Services, Mr. Sam Waltauer, to please come forward, because one of the footnotes we've mentioned at the beginning of this presentation was regarding the Urban Development Action Grant Program and the fact that there are some opportunities available in that regard. And given previous commentary and frankly, direction offered by the City Commission to discuss thoughts and considerations as to how we utilize that opportunity, I'd like to give you all background information so that you all can be advised accordingly. Mr. Waltauer, if you would, please. And at that point, I'll turn the meeting back over to you, Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, and we will hear from you. Mr. Waltauer, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Madam Mayor, members of the Commission, Sam Waltauer, Neighborhood and Community Services Department. I'd like to just briefly provide you some background and then an update as to our Urban Development Action Grant activity, and I have Furley Mesador with me if we get down into the weeds and need to explain some of the strategies that we are implementing with respect to these dollars. Just for some background purposes, the Urban Development Action Grant, we had 300, I'm sorry, $3,840,000 made available to the department back in the 2021 fiscal year. And what we'd like to do today is to talk about, from the time that we receive the money in the department, the activities that we are carrying forward, and where we are right now with respect to expenditures through the end of the fiscal year, and we'll entertain any questions at that point. So one of the things we looked at with respect to the grant was to ensure that we aligned the strategies with those of either CDBG, which is one of our federal funded grants, and the now-defunct Urban Development Action Grant. So we looked at those activities that we'd like to carry forward, which include purchase assistance, housing rehabilitation, public service dollars for, of course, nonprofit agencies within the city, carrying out services and business assistance. To this point, we are implementing three of the four. Business assistance is the remaining activity that we will launch with respect to working with small businesses. The allocation breaks out under purchase assistance, 1.209 million; housing rehabilitation, 988; public service, 579,000; and then business assistance for a total of 680. And then administration, which we wanted to make sure that we kept the administrative cost down low. It's at 10%, and you see that reflected as the last bar on the chart. So to date, we have been working through those activities during the initial year that we received the funding into the department. We, we were working on ramping it up. It was about the middle of the year. We brought on seasonal staff, nobody permanent, to make sure that we were not trying to burden the city with any additional personnel. So the administration part of it, that $384,000 only represents those part-time staff members or seasonal staff members that we have on board to help implement the program. So under purchase assistance, so far, we've successfully assisted a total of seven families, and we have families that are already in queue for purchase assistance, that we'll close those cases out by June 30th in terms of assisting those families in purchasing homes. And one of the things that we had shared with you in a memo back about a month or so ago was, the idea was to make sure that these dollars went directly to what we consider direct beneficiaries, to those residents in the city that would benefit them in terms of homeownership, which of course is a wealth-building opportunity, also a legacy-building opportunity, as well as rehabilitation, which of course, we can provide up to $60,000 per eligible household to bring their, bring their homes up to code. And what that does in the community, in our opinion, is it stabilizes those families, those homes. It may be a retiree, it may be someone, of course, on a fixed income, that may be a worker, but they have their homes, they own their homes, and they just need that extra help to be able to bring their homes up to code, which of course benefits us as a city in the long run. The public service dollars, which we will be looking at those applications, we already put out the, the request for funding, the availability, the availability of funding, and that $579,000, as we work with a committee similar to how we do with our CDBG, public service category, which accounts for 15% of the total amount, will be allocated to those eligible agencies once the committee has completed its work. And then business assistance, finally, we are looking to launch that later in the fiscal year, but that, the idea around the business assistance dollars is to. But that, the idea around the business assistance dollars is to ensure that we work with small businesses to help them. And the main focus in terms of direct beneficiaries, that it's a job creation tool where that if we're, we are assisting a business, then that will be tied to a worker on that job who meet the low and moderate income eligibility criteria. And we can talk about that more if you'd like. So by the end of the fiscal year, we anticipate, based on the dollars that are, have been expended already and those anticipated, those families that are in queue for the various strategies, purchase assistance, rehabilitation, and also the agencies under public service, we anticipate that of the 3.84 million dollars, 1.568 million will be expended with a remaining balance of $2,271,000 and some change. So I'm going to stop right there. That's a quick overview of where we are right now. Ferlin, of course, is available if we need to get down into some details that she certainly has more of a grasp of, and I'll stop right there for any questions.
Thank you. All right, so to the commission, I would, yeah, absolutely.
So what was the figure for the homeownership purchase you said that you assisted?
60,000.
Seven.
The amount, the number of families?
Seven so far.
Seven?
We have, we have three that should close by the end of this month.
So that'll make it 10?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, yes, yes, sir.
Ferlin, can you review, just for all of us, some of the changes that were made over the last few years as far as removing some of the barriers to some of these programs and some of these dollars? And then can you let us know what we are actively doing to engage the community and educate them on how to access these funds?
So, evening, afternoon, Commission, Ferlin Mesador, Neighborhood Services. With the Urban Development Action Grant and all of our program funds, we have, under the AHAH committee, reviewed the local housing assistance plan, and there have been changes made within that plan to help the residents, the very low to moderate income residents access the dollars. One of the major barriers was the access to homeowner's insurance. There are homes that are over 50 years old that required housing preservation. And unfortunately, while the residents met the income criteria, one of the stipulations was the fact that we required homeowner's insurance, which is not a state requirement. So through the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, that barrier was removed. And so eligible applicants can now come through the program, access the funds in order to rehabilitate the properties. With that, what we're trying to do in terms of education is educate families that it is important to have homeowner's insurance coverage because in the event something happens, you do need that security. Another barrier that was in place was the lien terms. Through our community outreach meetings with the community, there was concern that individuals did not want to apply for the program. We've had families that have come in, we've explained the process thoroughly, we've had applicants that have come through the entire process, gone through the four to six-week income eligibility, sat down at the closing table and decided to walk away because they didn't really want the lien terms. We were having families that were coming through the cycle, of course, who have gone through the program and then endured hardship at the end. Of course, when a family comes through and their child is five or six, 10 years, 15 years down the line, when they are now trying to access equity within the home, it is rather difficult because one of the stipulations for our program is that they have to repay the entire loan back. And so it does take a little bit of maneuvering on the, a part of the family and the lender in order to have that applicant pay us the full funds back for them to address family needs at the time. So the lien terms, Affordable Housing Advisory Committee also agreed that the lien terms would also be reduced for the programs. And since then, we have had an influx of individuals come through and apply for the program. One of the stipulations for the grants, again, because it does have to be used on very low to moderate income families, in the event that we don't spend the dollars, the city is actually working in arrears because they won't receive the funds in order to assist. So you have a group of individuals that funds are coming in specifically for, but they can't tap into the dollars. So some of the changes that were made throughout the program have been successful as we have seen an increase in the applications that have come in so far.
Great. And what other community engagement? Do we have any plans to continue to go out into the community and educate about these programs?
Currently, we have our needs assessment meeting, actually, that's scheduled for June 22nd. That's open to the public to attend so we can explain all of these programs in detail. We attend the community resource meetings, we attend, we have a community resource fair that's held twice a year. We are available and do attend all of the homeowners association meetings if we're asked to be there so we can explain these programs in detail. We have a master marketing list where we share our flyers and information to all the HOAs, the neighborhood associations, and different groups that are part of our list, where we kind of use that as advertising for the programs.
Great. Thank you, Ferlin. I know that you and your team and your board have put an incredible amount of work in over these last few years and I'm glad we're starting to see results from it.
Thank you.
Mr. Long?
Thank you. So I wanted to bring up a public safety matter that ties back to our budget since we're having this discussion today. It seemed like the appropriate time to bring it up. So I've had a lot of residents reach out to me that bring up traffic issues, like always. But there's some concern over the intersection at Congress and Atlantic, which I found out has the most crashes of anywhere in the city. And that's going to have increased traffic flow going through that intersection due to nearby construction coming up. So I reached out to Chief Major recently and asked him for some stats. Found out we have 3,600 crashes a year roughly in the city, 60 traffic homicide cases per year, which averages out to five a month. And when these happen, usually two of our traffic officers get assigned to investigate those. And that takes them off the streets for roughly a week every time they have to do that, which is five times a month on average. So my question is, do we have enough traffic officers? And you correct me if I'm wrong here, Mr. Moore, but our department recently asked for two more officers and one more sergeant. And what was approved was one additional officer and then one additional sergeant, and that officer is going to the traffic unit. But given our financial flexibility that we discussed here, can we afford that other requested officer? Because my preference would be that if we can, that that maybe would be a traffic officer if that's, but I'll defer to the chief's wisdom on that. And one more thing I'll add before I defer to you, Mr. Manager, is anything, if I learned anything during my campaign, was that residents overwhelmingly support necessary expenditures if it's for public safety. That's why we passed a public safety bond. So I'd love to just discuss this whole thing and get some more context regarding that officer that was requested.
Mayor, can I just recommend that we wrap up with UDAG and allow Ferlin to?
Oh, sorry, I didn't know we were still on UDAG. My bad.
I don't want Ferlin to have to.
We're not.
Stand, stand, stand here.
So on that note, any other questions concerning the Urban Development Action Grant?
I do. You know, I kind of, I'm a little, I have to tell you, I'm a little disappointed that we're taking so much of this, these funds. I don't disagree with some of where they're going, but I feel as though we really had an opportunity of really having a bigger bang for our buck when it comes to providing housing. One of the things that, I'm really surprised that you're able to even get people that can purchase housing here because everything is so expensive that it just continues to elevate. And we had, you know, $3.8 million sitting out there that, you know, could have been invested in, thank you, that could have been invested in land that we could then have, you know, leveraged with these builders that are required to build a certain amount of housing units. It seemed to me that by adding into that affordable housing inventory, that's what I was hoping the UDAG funds would have gone to because where we actually got these funds was in housing that no longer is there and available. I'm sorry, it's not, it was funds that basically we supported in building that were for affordable units. And it just seems to me that once we got those funds back, that that's where they would go. Now, I can tell you, the program that is going on with respect to helping people buy property and also assisting in houses that are in need of some repairs, I'm 100% for that. But I kind of feel like the business aspect of it, we have seen, we have programs with the CRA and others that are working with that end of it. It seems to me that that part of it isn't the part that I think that should be going towards. I would like to see us purchase land to be able to, again, like I said, flip over to these developers that are required to build and let them build at their expense houses in our town, just like we did the 20 homes with the CRA, and provide real affordable, 166,000 to 305,000 or $6,000 for three to five, three to five-bedroom, two-car garage homes. That's what we can do right now, and if we don't leverage that, we're going to miss that boat because it's going to be gone. You know, some way, somehow, it'll eventually disappear. So to me, I was hoping that we would see the money going into something like that. And I was really hoping that one of my colleagues would find that land over at the Pomosa as available to do just that because that would be a great opportunity, and this is maybe the seed money for it. So I just.
So the two columns, just so I'm on the same page as you, business assistance and the public service?
And their leftover, there's quite a bit.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Okay, is that, that's the primary?
Those are what I'm hoping to maybe take those out of that and not have those programs because they're duplicative. And, and also the administrative part of it, I mean, it seems very high. I know it's only 10%, but you know, my thoughts are that couldn't we be doing, we're already providing ship funds and whatnot, you know, for the others. I'm just wondering, why do we need so much extra in that? I would like to see that go to something that really can make a difference for families that are living here and also provide that future housing, you know, more housing in that, in that inventory of affordable.
So I think I would agree with the mayor that I wouldn't say that I'd agree we're removing all the funds because we have to remember that the CRA programs are only good for a very small geographic region.
True.
And so, but I could see those being lowered significantly, lowered, and of course, we can review it every, you know, every year. But what I'd be interested in is what can we do with the UDAG funds? Some of the ideas that the mayor has in regards to, you know, purchasing land, if we were to take out of those columns and have ourselves, we would have over a million dollars. Is that something that we can utilize these funds for?
So with Urban Development Action Grant, I'll have to look through my records. I do not believe land acquisition is one of the primary uses because HUD funds don't really allow you to use the funds on new construction. But I will definitely go back to the drawing board and check if land acquisition specifically is included there. We have had other programs and have tried to do land acquisition because of course, a few years back, we had the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. And so the reason why we stopped or halted in doing that is because land costs were increasingly high. And as part of that program, we couldn't just purchase the land with the property on it, we had to demolish. And, well, we weren't doing new construction, but if we purchased the property with, a land with property on it, we then had to repair the home. And so because of the decreased funding that was received through that program, we had to halt because we didn't have sufficient funds in order to do that as the purchase prices climbed. As it relates to the public service, right now, the public service advertisement has already gone out. We have received at least 13 applications. It's currently in the review committee in that process. And so we're hoping that within the next six to eight weeks, the review committee would have decided which nonprofit agencies could access or be awarded those funds. The differences between the two strategies, public service is only open to nonprofits, business assistance is only open to small businesses, which is five employees or less. So there are clear distinctions as to who can apply for those funds.
So would you be able to bring back any opportunities that we could leverage additional funds for, let's say it can't be to acquire land, but to accomplish some of the things that the mayor and obviously, we all want to accomplish for affordable housing outside of these programs?
Well, at the moment, staff is always looking at additional dollars that are being driven by the state or through the funding sources to the city. So staff is always reviewing any dollars that can help to support the city of Delray Beach in accomplishing its mission. So we will definitely look at that and bring those measures back to the commission.
I'd just like to add, one place we can look is the Workforce Housing Fund, where there is land acquisition carved out for that, so that might, may be an opportunity as well for land acquisition within that particular fund.
Well, the thing about it is the dollars are in this fund, and this is the fund I was hoping that maybe we could, you know, leverage off of. And again, you know, it's a great situation for the city. I'm just, when we can take dollars that are available through grant funds and purchase land and then allow someone else to build the property or the house for our citizens, which is just an amazing thing. I'm going to ask that, when you're doing this background checking as to if we actually can do something like this, to making it, to make it very clear that this is not land acquisition for the city, it's not land, it's land acquisition for exactly what these funds came from, which is affordable housing. So, you know, if they understood that this was specific to that, you know, cause, I'm hoping that they would say, yes, that would be something that would be agreeable to us, not just land acquisition because of course, they're not going to just let us buy land for, you know, for the city. I'm saying that it's specific to the purpose of building affordable houses. And again, I just think that we have got a great opportunity here and still a lot of inventory or, or I should say, banked homes that need to be built by these developers that, that are chomping at the bit to get in there and build those homes. And all we've got to do is provide that land. And I think that it's just a wonderful win-win if there's a way to do it, and I was hoping that this would be a potential. But regardless, I mean, we have to stay within the four corners of what is allowable, but I'd appreciate it if we can really see if there's any chance that we can use this for that.
We'll definitely look into it and get back to the commission.
Sounds great, perfect.
And Madam Mayor, Commissioners, what I'd like to do is arrange for a follow-up to this effect via the July 11th meeting four weeks from today. With more. So. Much as a. So the initial considerations regarding one additional traffic resource, as you put it, was a function in that regard. And part of today's exercise was to outline for you all the financial capabilities relative to some additional considerations you may be in position to offer. So in essence, does capacity exist to accomplish that ancillary resource, if you will? The answer to that question would be yes. And again, a reason for this particular exercise is to receive feedback from the ladies and gentlemen on the city commission so that we can entertain that consideration in advance of bringing back a former recommendation July 11th.
Very good. Okay. Did you want to continue, Mr. Long?
I would just simply ask it, what is the general cost of another traffic resource that we're putting in?
So with an additional person?
Person and whatever comes with that. Does that come with a car? Does that come with a motorcycle? How does that, how does that typically?
It would be a motorcycle. So the benefits, salary and benefits for an additional officer, you're looking at a little over $100,000 and a motorcycle roughly $27,000 is what I'm looking at. But we'll fine tune that as we further evaluate that.
I see Chief doing this, I think it, the standards is a car and, a car and a motorcycle or?
You do the photo.
Sorry. I'm treating the car separately because it's a capital improvement program consideration. But yes, that's in essence it.
Okay. I was just going to add that the vehicle also comes with that.
And I just said it.
Is that it, Mr. Long?
That's all I got. I just want to bring it up for discussion, see what you guys think.
Very good. Mr. Frankel? Nothing? Ms. Burns, anything else?
Well, yes, just maybe not at this time, however, I just wanted to know if decreasing, you said that the property tax will decrease. And, you know, kudos that it's been decreasing over the last 12 years, but would that have a negative effect on adequate maintenance of our city assets?
I wouldn't say so, Commissioner. I think that the increase in the taxable value will allow us to generate sufficient revenues to balance the general fund.
Okay, so we got to take care of the assets.
There you go, absolutely. Mr. Boston?
There you go, absolutely. Mr. Boston?
So are we, we're at the, we're like way ahead of schedule here, huh?
Yeah, I know.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just making sure I'm not missing other presentations.
Yeah, we're gonna have a few, we're gonna have a few minutes between meetings.
Okay. So I think the main topic that I wanted to bring up, actually, to piggyback on what Ms. Burns just mentioned, was city maintenance. I would say that it's probably the top concern that I get from residents. And obviously, there's, there's everything from public works to roads to water to parks to our historic buildings, right? So the maintenance is a really, really big, really big word. And meeting with Terrence and some of, of the directors, I really wanted to dig into why, right? And, and a lot of the reason why is because we're understaffed. We've been here before with many of our other departments, right, understaffed. We addressed most of, most of the city with a salary and wage study, and we made those adjustments across the board, correct? And we're seeing the fruit of that labor. What we didn't address was the team members that are working in our water treatment plant, that are fixing our roads, that are maintaining our buildings. They weren't affected by that. And currently in Delray Beach, those positions, our minimum wage is thirteen dollars an hour. I think this is something critical that we need to address. And if you do the simple math on that, that means that we have team members that start here at the city of Delray Beach that make twenty thousand dollars a year.
Full-time?
Full-time. Comes out to like twenty-six, twenty-seven thousand dollars a year at thirteen and, and change. That's our, that's our starting salary.
When is the next time that we are bargaining for, for our general?
Bargaining for-
We don't bargain for general, SEIU?
SEIU is what you're referring to.
I'm sorry, SEIU.
We'll begin that process next year.
Okay, because it would, I would be very careful about bargaining in between that, those times because you're setting precedent.
Well, we were able to address it on pretty much every single department to stay competitive and to staff up. If we wanna sit another year where the departments are not able to fill roles and we're gonna continue to lose more people because people are doing other people's jobs, other positions' jobs, we haven't added staff to Parks and Rec in many, many years as it's continued to grow. We have not added any, any members. And one of the ways that we can do that, obviously, is being competitive in the market space. Not to mention that I am personally embarrassed that our city's minimum wage is thirteen dollars an hour. I think it's something that needs to be addressed. It does, I don't think it should wait until we negotiate. I think it's something that we need. We've did it for the salaries that we control. We did the wage study. We increased it across the board. And there's a big chunk of our team members that were left out of that, and I think this needs to be addressed.
Mr. Moore, I mean, you are the person that basically has the direct link to that. What are your thoughts and if they are any different than, I mean, if they're, if they're in line with Mr. Boylston's, why are we, why, why do we not know this?
There is an advocacy being offered by the SEIU leadership that wage adjustments be made above and beyond the current minimum. Mr. Boylston just talked a little bit about that. And what the advocacy is, is to go to at least fifteen dollars an hour. And that's been communicated to the Department of Human Resources and likewise to the Office of the City Manager. So that's the genesis in that regard. And frankly, I think your commentary is appropriate in terms of the timeframe relative to negotiations. And that, nevertheless, to be competitive in that regard, they expressed an interest in making it to about fifteen dollars an hour. And the analysis to that effect involves what that will cost to go to the minimum wage of fifteen dollars an hour to also factor into the mixed compression. So the total impact for SEIU employees to make that adjustment to also take under consideration, compression comes out to be about two-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand-dollar investment. So to get to that place would be that amount of money, number one. Number two, we are looking at a revision favorable upon both parties to the existing agreement. If there was any interest in moving in that direction, my principal concern as it relates to the proposed budget process is, of course, what the financial impact would be, and I'll just discuss what that is. So in essence, there was an expression of interest on their part to move in that direction, and therefore, the analysis hasn't just been shared.
All right. Any more?
Well, I would like to open it up for discussion. I think this is critical. If there's any place that I can spend two to three-hundred thousand dollars, it would be addressing this need. Again, we've addressed it across our entire city and except one, one group. As the market continues to shift, as we have to stay competitive. And then if you're not even looking at that part, right? And I would nev- in my own private business, I would, I would never set a minimum wage of thirteen dollars an hour. But if you're not even looking at that part, look at our tax, look, look at what our residents are asking for. Look at the complaints that you get in your emails. It is directly connected. If we want to be able to maintain our city and do all the things that our resident expects us to do to keep Delray Beach, make Delray Beach even better than what it is, we need people. We need the people to stay in these positions. We need to be able to staff up. Otherwise, nothing's going to change. And I think this is a critical first step.
So is there a way to have that conversation with SEIU without necessarily reopening negotiations? Is that the only way to do it? Because they couldn't send us an MOU or something to that effect?
Something to that effect. There would be a provision of the agreement in that, but it would not be a full-open of new contract negotiations. It would be essentially subsetted, if you will. We would make slight adjustments to bring that back. But I don't think it's appropriate to engage in those specific details here and now. However, if, I'd like for us to keep the focus relative to the proposed budget process and therefore, if there is some interest in that regard, understand what the financial impact would be, and we would follow up with all other particulars to get to that place. So, so again, something like that would be a function of the city commission, offering direction in that regard. But as it relates to the proposed budget process, we've outlined for you fairly well, both Mr. Dunkley and myself, what capacity does exist, number one. Number two, proactively speaking, given the interests I just talked about having been expressed by SEIU leadership, what the financial interest would be. So with that, that's where we are, and I think we need to keep it solid in that regard. And if there is any direction to take a look, we will be updating the city commission accordingly.
And it would be my suggestion and recommendation that we do not get into the inner, you know, intra-negotiations in between. I, I just, I don't really, I'm not gonna be able to support that. However, I also feel like that's a low, I mean, it's obvious that that's low. And I would be amenable, we're going into negotiations, you said, next year, to even, maybe even up it even further than that, maybe, you know, a little bit further than the fifteen. I'm not okay, I'm, I'm okay with that, but I think that there are, there's things in place for reasons. And when we open up that can of worms, it, it, it kind of like it goes in other directions that are unplanned, and it gets to be a little bit hairy. So for me, I'm good with it, but I would say that it, it's done when we actually do the negotiations. And the SEIU, you know, they, they negotiate. And, and so they negotiated the last go-round. It's not like they've been sitting on the sidelines not doing their negotiation. So that would just be my recommendation, only because of the fact that I think that there's gonna be some, there's gonna be some issues otherwise that are not gonna really be able to be thought of until after it's the proverbial, you know, you know, cow, horses out of the barn, so to speak. So I, I would not be able to support that personally at this stage.
Ms. Qu- how many individuals are in this group?
I can discuss that a little bit. So as far as the number of individuals to go from the current minimum wage to fifteen dollars an hour, it would be sixteen people and the remaining compression piece would be about one-hundred-and-forty-nine people.
It's not just the sixteen, it's, you have everybody that basically now is earning less than that percentage difference. So you've gotta kind of move that up.
It's a four percent adjustment for the other hundred and sixty.
That's correct. The four percent adjun- adjustment for one-forty-nine, actually, is about two-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand dollars. And that adjustment in terms of those who are numbered, that's sixteen people, roughly about thirty-seven thousand dollars. Again, running that analysis based on that interest having been expressed at fifteen on their part, that's why I'm able to articulate as I am.
Yes, sir.
See, my problem is fifteen. What's the minimum wage at Starbucks? Twenty bucks?
So I'm actually very much in line with the mayor. I think this is something that needs to be addressed today because we can't wait to fix some of these issues in our city, get to fifteen. But I absolutely agree, Mayor, that when we go into the, the negotiations of the contract, it definitely should be higher. But I wasn't pushing for that. I had a conversation with Mr. Moore. He put forward that fifteen. I actually didn't know that it came from SEIU, but, but I think that needs to be addressed today. Not today, but you know what I mean, before the contract negotiations. So that we can go and we can fill these positions and, again, address one of the blaring needs in our, in our city for, for an expense of two-hundred and thousand dollars and change.
Yes, ma'am.
When is, you, you said negotiations start next year. When is that?
So the current agreement actually expires, I believe, will be September thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-four. So labor negotiations will begin in the early part of two thousand and twenty-four. So after the end of this calendar year, we'll resume activity at the table. And listening to some of the thoughts you've all just offered, a potential opportunity and what does happen in cities is, given the interest to do as best as we possibly can, provide that direction so that we can take the next dear approach, which would be probably seventeen an hour, eighteen an hour, whatever it is. I would not recommend us being in that particular place right now, but given the dialogue with respect to a fifteen-dollar-an-hour consideration in terms of an adjustment in that regard, I would keep the focus relative to the budget process. And given that direction and interest, we would responsibly go about the correct process.
I'm bringing it up now because obviously, we would need the budget for those additional funds.
So, Mr. Moore, how many people, how many open, open, available positions have not been able to be filled because of that?
I would have to defer to Mr. DeAndre to tell me what the current is. But again, the total aggregate positions, I've talked about sixteen, et cetera, and-
No, and that's the positions that are currently being, we're considering raising, not, not that are empty.
And that's why I've asked Mr. DeAndre to come forward.
Apparently, we have four.
Okay. To me, that just doesn't call for it, you know? I mean, we're talking about doing something that would be very outside of what we would normally do for, for open positions. To me, I just-
Go ahead.
But to Mr. Boylston's point, we haven't raised any of the ETFs since I've been here, eight years. So, in any of the, in any of the departments, so.
So, so let me ask a question. Don't you have a range of, of what you can? You have a range of, of value for each?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So why can't that be done without having to, why can't you have, have that done? Just like, for instance, bringing, bringing, does that take us to have to make that decision? Or does that take the city?
With SEIU, we can't do anything unilaterally.
Okay.
We have to engage them to ensure that we mutually agree on all of it.
And generally, when we do that, it's a give and take. There are, you know, it's like a kind of a little bit of a dance.
That's the strategy, for sure.
That's right. We get a little something, they get a little something. And, 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 you know, obviously, we wanna make sure that they're being paid properly, but there is usually give and take. That's why we do negotiation. It's not a one-way street. And what we're doing is we're opening it up to that, so. All right. I think that, I don't know, I think you have your support, sounds like.
I'd like to explore this soon.
Okay. Well, it sounds to me that there are some interests if I can get consensus relative to the fifteen-
Yeah.
Piece as the start now, and other considerations will be born next year.
And I think it's just so important what Dwayne just mentioned. We haven't added any positions in the eight years that he's been there. So when you get those emails about maintenance, or we're wondering why we can't get our buildings, or if we can't pressure clean this, or we can't fix, that's the reason. We, and that's on us. We have to fund those positions. So as we go into this budget cycle and some of those departments are asking for more people, we, you know, we have to fund those positions.
I don't disagree with you, and I think that, you know, funding, funding positions and making more positions is perfect for what we're talking about doing here, doing something that's different from what the agreement is.
But if you can't fill them, if you can't fill them because you can't be competitive in the market, and nor do I even think we should be filling positions at thirteen dollars an hour.
Well, I-
I think it's wrong, so, but I, we have consensus.
Yeah, you do.
So given the budget process and to incorporate goals and objectives to this effect, that's the focus in that regard. And considerations relative to the steps of getting to that place will likewise be forthcoming. So duly noted, and that's part of the direction.
Very good.
So thank you.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Boylston?
No, no.
So I've got a couple of questions. Our fund balance, you said our unassigned fund balance is around forty-five-point-five million dollars. What is that percentage are we carrying? What is that percentage to-
Twenty-five.
No, well, I mean, I'm not sure it is. I think it might be more.
Yeah, the, the mayor, the general fund, fund balance we're looking at, it's about a hundred and sixty, it's, it's around a hundred and twenty million and-
So I guess my question is, is that, you know, we're carrying a much greater, a much richer than twenty, than the twenty-five percent.
Yes, than the twenty-five percent.
Correct. We're probably thirty-five to forty percent. That's what our unassigned fund balance is probably carrying at?
Correct. It's hovering around there.
Right. Okay, so, and that's quite a bit in advance of what that, you know, larger fund balance that we were supposed to be carrying because we're in those jeopardized areas, if you will, you know, for lack of better terminology. So, you know, I, 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 I look at that because the one thing that you did say was that that's, you know, that extra is always great to have it for whenever you wanna buy something or do something that isn't necessarily been thought about, thought about, which I understand. But, you know, again, I'm gonna roll it back that this is the, the people's money, not our money. And, you know, to carry that type of an excess, it, it's, it's a little concerning. We have raised the taxes or the, the rates on water. We've raised the rates on stormwater. We've raised, we're raising, not to mention the amount of, you know, the, the inflation that everybody's feeling in their pockets from insurance to, carry insurance to going to the grocery store, going out to eat. My gosh, it's, it's become almost, you know, unaffordable for an average family anymore, whereas a few years back, it was affordable for everybody. So from my perspective, I think that that millage rate needs to really be looked at further. Whether it's, and listen, the tick down last year for, for like a, oh, point one was like a million-two, if I remember correctly, or a million, little, little over a million dollars. So I, I understand that that's going forward, and I don't want it to be too great. But we're only taking a point-zero-five tick down. I think we can easily afford that point-one, especially with what we're looking at in the one-point-four-billion-dollar to one point, I mean, to si- I'm sorry, the fourteen-point-four-billion-dollar valuation, all the way up to the sixteen-point-two-billion-dollar valuation, which means that even though our tax rate is going down, people are paying more for their taxes because their values are going up, with the exception of those that have to save our homes and the, you know, the holding back. But for the most part, we're getting this incredible amount coming in because a lot of these older homes that basically we're paying nothing in taxes have been turned into multimillion-dollar homes that are paying a lot in taxes. And we're starting to feel that, including the businesses and the, and the activity that's happening in our town. We're, we're really, really fortunate. And so to balance it out, I kinda feel like the way that we can do that with our citizens is to lower that, that rate as much as we can without affecting any services. And I think we have a great opportunity just because of the fact that the city's going and blowing. And again, like I said, it's not going to lower their taxes, it's just the rate. So it just lowers the amount of, of more taxes they're gonna have to send in. So I, I would definitely say, let's look at that. I know that this is a, this isn't a cap. This is a cap from what we'd be looking at. We can go down. But I know that when you guys go back to the drawing board, you're gonna be looking at all of this as spendable amounts. And I would have to tell you, I'd like to see it just a little bit lower. I'd like to see that one percent that we were doing before.
I think we made a loose commitment last year to point-one-five, last year.
Yes.
Because it made up half of the year we went flat. So really-
It's one point five. I mean, one point one five.
It's point-one-five.
I know. But I'm okay with the point-one if they need that extra. Because, again, we're asking them to do a lot of, we're asking them to do a lot. And so to me, I'd be okay with that, that-
But really, what you're doing, especially, this is your, kinda, your industry, you're buying a point, right?
It's correct. It's correct.
So we have ten million dollars. So we have ten million dollars, ten million dollars. How much does it cost to buy a point?
About a million and, uh, change, maybe a million-four?
Yeah, so zero-point-one is around one-point-six, one-point-five million.
There you go.
Point-zero-five is eight-hundred thousand dollars.
So we're really talking about one-point-five to one-point-six million.
I, and I've already shared this with Terrence. I'm, I'm for setting the goal of the point-one-five. We made that commitment-
I'm, I'm with it, I'm with you.
Last year, and if we need to buy a point, if we need to use some of that ten million dollars, so that-
Let's let them float the one-mil ra- reduction. We can go further than that.
Of course, of course.
So, but they're only looking at the capping at the point-zero-five, and I'd rather see it at the point-one.
I, I hear you.
And then we could maybe go to one-point-five.
Just in years past, you have always said-
I know, when you give it to them to spend, it's going to go, it's going to go.
I know, you've always said that. I've always been the one-
It's so true. It's true. Listen, if you're, if you're willing, but again, I know that-
If there was a consensus to go point-one-five, just because every single year you've made that point, and I've gone with you on it, that, hey, let's just tell you what it's going to be and go for it, and, again, we have ten million dollars, so you can buy that-
That's correct.
Buy that point back, so it might not even affect. You might not have to go find this money.
And that's ten million dollars we're talking about in the un, um, the un, uh, what do you call it, um, a reserve, the?
Unassigned.
Unassigned reserve.
The unassigned fund balance.
So it wouldn't even affect, it wouldn't even affect anything that we're talking about here. I'm with you. I'm one-point-five. For, uh, point-one-five. I don't know if you guys, if we have a consensus.
Okay, that looks like a majority consensus. So if I may, just to wrap up, so to speak, as we prepare for July eleventh, Mr. Dunkley and I and other team members will engage in a necessary analysis to strike a balanced budget recommendation in addition to all our input offered.
Okay, and so I'm not done, so are you, you wrapping it up?
I was simply responding to that direction.
Okay, all right, good, okay. And then also, I just wanted to mention to my colleagues, um, that we also are increasing uh, the rates of, um, of, uh, parking by two million dollars, so there is another, you know, money that's coming in the door. I don't, we, yeah, go ahead.
Do you think that we should have a enterprise fund for parking?
Possibly, but, I mean, that's something we can do otherwise, but I'm definitely, I'm definitely down for that, and I think that we should also-
I am too.
Consider, consider, when we're talking about the INLU, I think that's the appropriate time to talk about that, and also how we can, what we need to be doing if we're going to continue with INLU, and it being a one-time thing is just, it kills me every time. I'm, I'm down with what you're talking about, too. All right, and then, um, the seven-month of funding for, um, Highland Beach, that was mentioned. Um, what does that really mean? Um, and is it that we're going to see increased funding after that seven months, or is it going to be a, um, a wash? How is that going to work, since we've only got seven months left in the two thousand and twenty-four year?
So the consideration for Highland Beach is roughly five million dollars, and we have only calculated seven-twelves of that in the budget on both the revenue and the expense side.
Okay.
We don't foresee, uh, any major increases, however, uh, we just had to decrease their consideration from Highland Beach and decrease the, uh, relevant expenses in the fire budget for that.
So it's not going to affect our bottom line moving forward?
No, ma'am.
All right, that's what I, I was asking. I just wanted to make sure that I understood that. Um, let me see if there was anything else. Okay, you mentioned vehicle rental charges as being one of the reasons why we're seeing some increases. Tell me about that, because I thought we were not doing vehicle rentals. We're buying.
Yeah, so the vehicle rental, and, and, and you hit the nail on the head, Mayor, because the, that's the main reason why we're increasing the vehicle rental charge, and that's an internal charge.
Okay, yes, thank you.
Recharging ourselves to save up for that.
Yes, okay, you're, you're from department to, uh, the city, so that they're making sure that we're covering that through the departments.
Exactly, to be able to cash fund those purchases.
You have to say no more. I get it now. I just wanted to make sure that we were on that same. We already talked about the U-DAG, and that was it for me. I, I think you guys covered everything.
Yes, ma'am.
Pretty much, otherwise.
So with that, we'll be back before you July eleventh. All points, all consensus, all direction to be incorporated into what will be the formal budget recommendation coming from the Office of the City Manager at all, to also take a look at the military adjustments, and we'll update it, and we'll go from there. So I look forward to four weeks from today. One second, please.
Yep. I was forgetting something.
And also, there's an ancillary piece of direction related to the A-Guide funding, given some of the dynamics at the state level. So I'd like to ask CRA Executive Director Renee Jada Singh to briefly update the commission in that regard, and I think that will conclude the presentation. We should have a little time for a break.
Hello, everyone. Renee Jada Singh, Executive Director at the Delray Beach CRA. So we spoke about this as CRA board members, um, so we're bringing it over to the city side. This is publicly noticed as well for CRA, um, members to speak, so if you want to speak as CRA members, please feel free to do so. Um, but we have been talking for several years about the A-Guide funding program. It funds some of the nonprofits that are on city property. Um, so we had looked this year about potentially having the city fund those. The one group that we could potentially keep funding is the, or we could, is the, um, W-Beach Community Land Trust, because it relates to housing, and housing is something that is squarely in the CRA Redevelopment Act. So I just wanted to bring that up. I talked to Terrence about having that discussion here to see where the commission, as a city commission, is on, um, assisting or finding funding. Maybe we could see if there's things on the city side that CRA could fund that are more in line with what we have in our, our plan, and then the city would fund the groups. Because A-Guide was always supposed to be temporary, but we're going on, I think, twelve, thirteen years, and I think a lot of the programming that we're funding is not enhanced anymore. It's, it's part of their service. It's not just an add-on at this point.
I guess my question would be, as a, um, mayor to the city manager and to my colleagues, is how are we going to take over the function of what you do in the A-Guide in, in making sure that the, um, the, the, their, the budgets, everything is in line with what, uh, you know, what, or was that just specific to being, um, uh, being funded by the CRA?
That was. We created the A-Guide. We had an audit from the Auditor General several years ago, and we had the A-Guide program in place, and they said that it was a good program for the framework because the funding was here. Some of these groups already receive funding on the city side through the management agreement or the ruilable license, so I don't know what mechanism would be, but there already is funding going to the groups. We only had the enhanced because it was us.
Gotcha, and you had to, we had to, um, work within the four corners of what, uh, a payment coming out of a CRA could do that was specific.
Right. The city has more flexibility in the funding. Ours is more restricted, so general funds can be used for other things besides what we can use ours for.
And so I know that when we actually switched this over, I think, uh, Commissioner Frankel and myself were on the commission at the time, possibly, um, there was a, a shift, if you recall, because the CRA was receiving a tremendous amount of money, and the city was flatlining, and we, we just didn't have the money for the services to be able to continue. So that's why we looked to the CRA to help us, because CRA district was just going, um, like bonkers and getting, uh, a lot more of that revenue in, and the city was not. So my question to the city is, are we in a different situation that we can handle this moving forward, and do we want to, is that something that you would recommend that we do?
So as Ms. Jada Singh just stated, we've been spending time with one another, and we did incorporate some flexibility into the process for the upcoming fiscal year. So it will be a transitional approach, however, we can begin twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four. And much of this, of course, was based on recent experiences and discussions with the Community Redevelopment Agency Board of Directors, you all functioning in that capacity. So we spent a fair amount of time together, and I did pivot back with the Department of Finance so as to incorporate some capabilities.